All right, good evening. Thank you everyone for your patience. December four. All right, we'll start it. So it's on the record. Good, good evening, everyone.
All right, good evening. Thank you everyone for your patience. December four. All right, we'll start it. So it's on the record. Good, good evening, everyone. All right, good evening. Thank you everyone for your patience. Okay, all right, we'll start again.
All right, we'll try to stay down here. Wait a second and see if this comes back as an echo.
Calvin, you gotta speak up more. Get closer to the microphone.
I will. We're kind of testing to see we're getting an echo. Back and forth. So I think we solved that.
I don't know if they can hear you.
I think you need to turn your volume back up that you did and then turn it off at the, on the YouTube page.
It's all bad.
I don't think so. You're not hearing me.
I don't know if they can hear you.
I don't think so.
I think you need to turn your volume back up that you did.
All right, we're gonna test the audio again and see if we still have the echo. All right, we'll give it a try. The December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Watkins County Planning Commission meeting is called the order. Follow the roll. Calvin Barton, that's me. I'm here. Daniel Dolquod. Daniel Dolquod. Artur Desmoni.
Here.
Jim Hansen.
Here.
Stephen Jackson.
Here.
Julie Jefferson.
Here.
Kimberly Lund. Kimberly Lund. Dominic Misery.
Here.
And Scott Van Dalen.
Here.
Please join me for the flag. All right, before we get to department update, I wanted to introduce the Watkins County staff that's here and makes this run. We're getting a new planning commission coordinator that will be Eileen. So we'll be seeing a lot of her. Becky Box is Watkins County Building Services Coordinator. He's middle. And then Kelly is Natural Resources Coordinator in Watkins County. And so that's who we have here. And it is time now for department update. And that'll be Steve Robert, the complaining director.
I'm behind you.
Oh, there.
So I want to talk about three things really quick tonight. I want to talk about one, our docket, our planning commission docket. That's the thing that we use to work off of as far as the next thing that we're gonna work on. Then I want to talk a little bit about the comp plan. And then third, I want to talk really, really briefly about our business meeting that will be holding in February. We have our annual business meeting in February for the planning commission. So first, give me a second. I'm gonna share my screen and show you the docket. And you let's see, how's that look? Not very good. A little better. So this, this is the docket and our plan is to run through this in February when we do our annual business meeting. And I can run through this tonight really quick if you'd like. I'll leave that at the, at the pleasure of the commission and talk about the status of these. But in summary, all, everything on here, except for a couple of, a couple of exceptions, you guys have done. Or is going into the comp plan. And so we're, we're almost caught up on our docket. The, the council actually updated the docket in October and added a new item on there. And that currently is in the egg egg advisory group. And we hope to see, Dave just made a recommendation last night on that. And so we hope to see that to you guys will come to your, your next your next meeting in January on propane and the eggs. But I guess I'd ask the, the commission, if it is your pleasure, I'm happy to run through these and talk a little bit about where, or just give you a status for which one is.
Commissioner Desmoni.
So, uh, thank you, Steve, and thanks for your email to me. I was a little bit of an instigator and kind of asking because we had so many cancellations and I just wanted to the natural concern was that things on the planning commissions and agenda are slipping. But thank you for this update. It, it's reassuring. Um, does this mean also, however, that we should plan for particularly demanding and energy consuming meetings next year related to the con plan?
Yeah, and actually, that's the next thing I want to talk about. I'll show, I'm gonna show you just a, a kind of a gant over chart of our plan for the con plan. You will be seeing quite a bit of more of that next year and a whole bunch in, in early twenty-five. Uh, but yes, you will be seeing quite a bit more in twenty-four, especially as we get towards the end of twenty-four.
So you're promising us more big packets. Thank you for that. Bigger the better.
Lots of paper. Yeah, don't worry about that. And like I say, I can, I can run through this if you want. I will run through this in detail at our February meeting. We'll walk through everything exactly where things are in the docket. Um, and I could do that tonight if you want. Or we can kind of skip that and I can move on to talk a little bit about the con plan and then that, that piece. I'll leave that to you.
Good. Wanted to hear a little bit tonight. We'll have it. An idea what's coming. Can you just scan over a few basic things possibly?
Uh, well, well, maybe I can, I'll, so the first thing on it is the first thing is twenty twenty-five con plan. So that, that is rolled into the twenty twenty-five con plan. Um, sorry, my, my attempt at really bad humor. Zoning density and lot size amendments. You guys offered a recommendation, council on five eleven on that. Uh, Watkins County code amendments. That is our annual code cleanup. You offered a recommendation in October on that. The next one at the bottom of, of the list there, the propane reflow storage distribution facilities and egg zones under certain circumstances. That's the one that the council just added in October to the to the docket and the egg advisory group made a recommendation on last night and you'll be seeing it your next meeting. Hold on, there's a few more pages here. Cherry Point shoreline access. You offer a recommendation that's July. The Lake Whatcom watershed seasonal closure exemption. That is one of the ongoing items that we have and we're in conversations with uh, the proponent of that as well as the city of Ballingham and, and others on that, on that item. So that's, that's likely coming at some point. Go ahead and have UGA expansion. That will be part of the, the con plan. Analysis and review. M R L expansion for Breckenridge Road. Again, that's rolled into the con plan. You'll see a few of these, uh, M R L mineral resource land expansion. You'll see a few of these that have been doctored. Those will all be part of that compound analysis. Uh, wind energy systems amendment at the bottom of the page gives off the recommendation in March on that. Bear with me, I'm working two mediums here. Uh, then we, at the top of the page, we have another M R L expansion that again is going with the con plan. All those M R L, all those mineral resource land evaluations are going together. Sign regulation update. You have the recommendation on that in June. The vacation rental regulations that, uh, I don't remember exactly when you offered a recommendation. I think several years ago before my time, but that has gone to council and councils. Done work on that this last year. Code enforcement amendments. That, that is generally not something that would come to the planning commission, but that's something that we plan to take to the council first quarter of, of twenty-four. That is looking at, uh, the code enforcement regulations and how code enforcement is, uh, our code enforcement code. Wedding and special events. Bottom of the page, you got offered a recommendation for that on five twenty-five. The agricultural, agricultural strategic plan implementation. That again will get rolled into the con plan as well as the M R L expansion. And that, that is your docket as it currently exists. I also want to point out really quick the things you did that weren't necessarily on your docket. You offer recommendations on the open space. You did that in October. Six years capital, capital facilities plan. You did that uh, May. Public participation plan. You've done April. You also did but you, you got some presentations on the con plan and, 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 um, uh, up the update process and some of the codes that were updated. I'm sorry, statutes were updated from commerce in January of last year. So that was, that is your docket and that's, uh, it's, you've done a pretty good job this year of knocking some stuff off of there.
Right.
Good. Thank you. So I, I thought I'm gonna keep going. I'm gonna keep running to my second item con plan here. I'll go for it. Let's see. Well, let me just do this verbally. I apologize. I would have a really neat gant chart to show y'all that I'll make sure and share it our next meeting. But the most, the, the real heavy lifting for the planning commission is coming in the end of twenty-four and the start of twenty-five. That's where the, the big stuff for you guys are coming. The process in general, and really talking general terms right now is we're kicking off conversations with all the advisory groups and Watkins County, we have a bunch of advisory groups, as you probably know. So we're kicking off those conversations. We're getting feedback from them as far as what the general issues they see in the chapters that they would be, have most influence or their expertise would have the most influence on. Gathering that up, we're taking all of the statutory requirements that the state has given us that we have to modify. We're taking the council priorities that they have identified through the resolution they passed. We're putting all that together, figuring out what actually has to change in the con plan. We're doing some of that text writing. And once that gets written up, then it'll come to you guys. Everything is gonna funnel through the planning commission. That is part of your uh, charge. Like it or not that. That's one of the great things you get to do is you'll get to all that will funnel through you once those we get that information from those advisory groups. Um, and get some of that text written up. There's also fair amount of analysis that has to take place on the, you're kind of on the staff level to update numbers and provide you with the background in order to make some, you and the councils have the background you need to make. You guys for the recommendation, the council for those decisions on a lot of this stuff. So lots, lots and lots of stuff to do there. And then I guess the final thing, unless there's some questions or you, um, like I say, we'll talk more details in the future. I will share my cool looking gant chart. Our business meeting, February, where is our annual business meeting? This is where we like, like our, um, officers. This is where we look at our business rules. This is where we have all, all of those conversations, what's working well, what's not. So we'll be doing that our first meeting. I think I'm done.
All right. Thank you. So now is the time for open session for public comment. And, um, our Becky Box, our coordinator is going to talk about the rule. We're speaking. And then, um, I know she's gonna point this out. I know today we got a lot of uh, emails about Hawkeye. And I think that is gonna fall under the topic tonight. So you won't speak in open session. You'll speak in the public hearing. And so go ahead, Becky.
Welcome to the meeting. This meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. As noted on our website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to the items that are scheduled on the agenda, such as the recreation plan. If you would like to provide public comment at this time about any other issue, you will take comments from those in the room first. Please come up to the podium, print your name on the signup sheet. And then announce your name.
Okay. Excuse me, Kate.
And you'll have three minutes to speak.
All right. After I sign in.
Tonight, I signed up Angela Anderson and Kevin Bockel and will reserve until we talk about recreation. It's
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Widener. In Watkins County. Steve has addressed some of my issues. What I'm here about is input on the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan change. We're looking at, uh, in a nutshell, extending the urban growth area north of Sunset Avenue. Here's the reasoning. We know the traffic studies with the department transportation, there's been, it's been multimillion dollars on the Slaya Road Bridge due to rapid growth in the area within the next decade. Would like to be part of that. Previous some information from the Watkins County Council meeting with Burndale Mayor and planners that show desire to direct growth south and east, which is where Sunset Avenue is, what we're talking about. Uh, Michael Thervon, the city, Burndale City Planner has suggested that the urban growth extension with light industrial could have mixed use commercial development in the area we're talking about. Like for a electric vehicle sign company that would provide signs with wifi to the charging stations to indicate whether or not they're working. Could be a light industrial use thousand fifty nine square foot building. And finally, the policy two M M one states that there shall not be expanded. The densities won't be changed past those established in twenty twelve, which are drawn to include areas developed at a higher rural density in twenty eleven. Our property is quite a bit different from that. Right across the street, there's R one. And we're R five and we're a stone throes distance away from R one density and the urban growth area. And, uh, so we're gonna continue coming back and having any input that we can with the, uh, stages that Steve detailed for input with the, I think it's S P J preparation, which is doing your studies. So.
I love that. Thank you.
Is anyone else in the room wish to speak? Is there anyone remotely wishing to speak? If so, raise your hand. Or is calling in by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll call this session to a close.
Thank you. So now it's time for commissioner comment. Any commissioner comment? Commissioner Desmoni.
I just wanted to, um, remark that, um, I noticed that our packet which we got in the mail was, uh, printed single side. And in the past, we've gotten our packets printed double sided. And wasn't it, there was a reason why it came single sided or if it's something that everyone would be fine requesting that we return to double sided printing.
Sure. And what, what I had learned on that commissioner Desmoni is that in the transition of staff that our planning commission coordinator has taken another position and it happened in the transition.
Okay, yeah. So I, I, no complaints. I just wanted to know if we want, so we'll return back to double sided.
Right. Any other commissioner comment? Okay, then, um, approval of minutes for the October twelfth. I can make a motion that we accept them. I don't see any issues. We have a motion to accept the minute, approve the minute.
A second.
And we have a second. Is there any additions or corrections? additions or corrections? Seeing that there are no additions or corrections. Eileen, would you call the roll, please? Becky will call the roll.
Misery.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Deschmanni.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jackson.
Abstain.
Jefferson.
Abstain.
Harry's five days to abstain.
Thank you. So now we are on to, um, our main, um, piece of business for tonight, and that is regarding the comprehensive plan for parks, recreation, and open spaces. And I am gonna turn this over to Steve or are we having Kelly?
We are gonna turn this over to Lucas.
Okay.
Hi.
Oh, there we are.
There we are. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, planning commission. I am, uh, Lucas Clark, long range planner with Watkins County Planning and Development Services. Uh, tonight Rod Lamb, who's in the room with you. Um, Parks Design and Development Manager will be, be presenting the comprehensive parks recreation open space plan for public hearing, also known as the CPROS plan. Uh, Watkins County P D S reviewed the CPROS plan and a deter determination of non-significance was issued under the state environmental policy X C P A in November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And I'll step aside and let Ron give you his presentation now. Ron, it's up to you.
It would be best if I can see the screen. Say I rehearse this. I'd be controlling. So I'm off my game. I'll hope I recover. Keep her up. Relax. Among friends. Hi, good evening. My name is Rob Lamb. Um, I am the design and development manager for Watkins County Parks Recreation. I'm joined by colleague Dave Bramer, uh, project manager for the department. Um, the purpose of my visit is to talk about the CPROS plan. What I'd like to do is go over the purpose of that plan. Uh, highlights some accomplishments that have been achieved since, uh, the, the last planning period. I'll outline the planning process we use to update the plan and then I'll identify next steps. You go to slide two, please. Lucas, can you hear me? Thank you. Um, let's see. So why is this plan important? It's important because it identifies priorities, needs, and desires of the community in regards to parks and recreation. It is also a requirement of the state recreation and conservation office for the, the Watkins County. You'd be eligible for certain grants, um, that are funneled through, uh, the recreation and conservation office. The plan itself has a six-year timeframe, meaning that the Recreation Conservation Office wants us to keep it up date and relevant. That usually depending on when council proves it, it's a through three, um, grant cycles. Uh, we will also use this plan to inform the update to the county's comprehensive plan. You go to slide three, please. And you can go ahead and reveal all six required elements, Lucas. So Recreation Conservation Office requires the plan includes six elements. They're highlighted here. We need to have a section that identifies the plan's goals and objectives. We need, I'm sorry, go back one. Thank you. Uh, an inventory of our existing facilities. We have to have some kind of engagement with the public to determine what they are wanting, what they're using and what the shortcomings are. We also need to come up with a, a form of demand analysis to evaluate how our facilities are, are serving our public. Um, also needs a, a capital improvement program listing specific projects that will help us achieve the goals and objectives at, at duration of not less than six years. Finally, plan needs to be adopted by the local jurisdiction. In this case, it'd be Watkins County Council. Slide four. So this slide indicates some of the accomplishments that we, um, achieved over the last planning period. Watkins County was awarded nearly one point three million dollars in grant fundings that was used to acquire and develop recreational facilities. We need, um, also got a public recreational easement at the Ason Preserve. If you're not familiar with that, that's on Lummy Island. It's the old quarry site. Um, we, uh, developed multiple miles of, uh, recreational trails at Lake Whatcom and Lookout Mountain. Replace multiple recreational facilities, including, including two playgrounds. We go to slide five. The next few slides are highlights of some of those specific projects. Silver Lake, we've been engaged in a major capital improvement of, of facility. It's our flagship facility acquired in the mid-sixties, late sixties, opened to the public from, um, ran by Watkins County in nineteen sixty-nine. Being more than fifty years old, it's, you know, had its, you know, the, the existing infrastructure that was there when we, when we acquired it and then developed it is aging out. So major campaigns replace that. We started with, uh, road construction, replacing the main entry road and parking facilities, um, upgrading water and electrical. Uh, that project was followed with a campground reconstruction at Maple Creek Campground. And we're engaged now in shower and restroom facility upgrades. Slide six. At Samish Park, we replaced an aging, uh, playground facility that not only was at the end of its useful life, but had accessibility barriers. The new facility is completely ADA accessible and also meets all child, child safety requirements. Slide seven. At Maple Creek Park near the community of Maple Falls, um, we replaced a uh, old log stringer bridge that crossed Maple Creek, um, Maple Creek. Uh, this is the alignment or portion of the alignment of the Beta Baker Trail flows through Maple Creek Park. Um, in addition to being damaged by a storm, the old log stringer bridge wasn't open to the multi uses that the Beta Baker is supposed to accommodate. The new facility is a steel truss bridge that does accommodate bicyclists and equestrians. Slide number eight. In Point Roberts. In Point Roberts at Lighthouse Marine Park, we had a major reconstruction project of the boardwalk at that facility. That facility was constructed in the. Mid nineteen seventies. And at the time, it was envisioned as a staging area for large community events, particularly the art and music festival that happened in August. Through the decades, attendance at that particular event dropped off, particularly after nine eleven, when the border crossings became challenging. I'll get into it, I'll get into it, you're doing good. So we were, what we found ourselves with is a large expansive boardwalk that was being underutilized. Most of the use was occurring in a few key places, close to the restrooms and close to the water. So what we did is we renovated that section, right sized it for its use and our anticipated use in the future. And the areas that were once covered with boardwalk were removed and that those areas were restored. The project also included replacing a playground that was in a similar condition to that at Samish Park. But slide nine. And Nesset Farm, we're in an effort of stabilizing some historic structures that part of the original farmstead. The machine shed, the old farmhouse are going to be critical elements for, once we open that facility to the public to provide interpretation of early homesteading days in Waukesha County. Our partner on that provides funding towards the Nesset Foundation. Slide ten. I didn't make a connection here. We also worked at. On Lummy Island at the Lummy Island Overlook. Worked with a local contractor to replace that facility. It was constructed in the early nineteen nineties, being that close to the salt environment. It took a beating in terms of of weather. The project was initially to replace the wooden stairs that went down to the provide shoreline access. Getting into the project, we realized the deck was was. Also well beyond its serviceable life and it needed to be reconstructed. Slide eleven. Over the last five years, we've had a big push to implement a trail plan in at Lake Waukesha Park and Lookout Mountain Forest Reserve. This was largely done. Let's say it's majority of it done with cooperation with local volunteer groups. They also work with the Washington Trails Association to construct a lot of those trails. How about slide twelve? There were two planning initiatives completed during the planning phase or planning period, and they included the left hand document is. The previous slide is a result of the initial recreation trail plan is for implementing that plan. This particular plan, there's a lot of interest in this. This happened because of the, you may recall. County took ownership of Department of Natural Resource properties on both sides of Lake Waukesha watershed. In it, the 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 process is re-convance, where they can be done for park purposes where a county takes back control over. Commercial forestry lands and use them for park purposes. There was a lot of community interest in this particular project because it was developing a. Recreational trail system in a sense of watershed, so we had to balance both things, right? Really? The the particular user groups, mountain bikers, hikers, trail runners are very interested in having a expansive system. We had to balance that with protecting the watershed. Several recreational user groups, including the mountain bike coalition, the Beckman Air Forcemen became stakeholders and served in an advisory capacity. To craft this plan that did just that. At in Birch Bay, we contracted with Robert Droll Associates Landscape Architects to come up with a master plan. It was also community focused. It's in the middle of Birch Bay, provides water access, has about four acres of upland. And about eleven acres of tideland, so it's a, so it's an ideal property to serve. That community as well as the entire community of Waukesha County as a waterfront property. This property will include off street parking for, if you've been there during busy times, there's really, really limited parking in Birch Bay. Will also provide a public restroom. And serve as a staging area of the multiple community events that happen throughout the year. You go to slide thirteen. Let's just reveal all the text for me, Lucas. Let's stay on thirteen. There are four components in our planning update. We did an inventory of our existing facilities. Performed a demand and need analysis, established goals and objectives. And the plan includes implementation effort and how we can, how we can provide adequate recreational facilities to meet the needs of the Waukesha County. Let's go to slide fourteen. Go and reveal the text on slide fourteen. So inventory begins with understanding the regional context, where our facilities sit in the landscape, and what are the outside influences? We also look at our park classifications. Classifications are important for us to categorize our various types of facilities. To help us make management decisions, we also look at service area of what those classifications are supposed to serve. The inventory includes an organizational structure. Parks and Recreation is is broken up into three divisions. Our administrative services, design and development, which Dave and I are composed, and operations. Operations is further subdivided into three regional service areas to serve our public. Finally, we inventory all of our facilities and do condition assessment. Waukesha County has seventy three properties that cover more than sixteen thousand acres. Next slide. Let's reveal that text on slide fifteen. So demanded and need analysis really looks at the makeup of our community, its population, the population trends, demographics, how the population is changing. We look at our visitation numbers and see how those trend lines are changing. In the upper right hand side, you see bar graph. Beginning in two thousand sixteen to twenty twenty two, and you can see the effects of the global pandemic. We had a lot of use during that time when people are looking for outdoor, safe outdoor activities. It also looks at levels of service. Waukesha County has two levels of service for parks and recreation that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, county comprehensive plan. And they relate to acres of developed parks per population and miles of trails per population. The CPROS looks at potential alternative levels of service consideration. In updates to the comprehensive plan in the future, and the idea with that is to perhaps update these to be more responsive to Waukesha County recreational folks. Finally. The the demand and need analysis includes. Public outreach, and as I mentioned, this plan was updated sort of at the beginning of the pandemic, which limited our ability to brought to the community like we normally do in whole. Town meetings. Instead, at that time, we completed an online survey and advertised it throughout the community to get responses. The the survey was similar to surveys that we've done in the past, updating compounds with a few adjustments because of the pandemic. We had good response with that survey, over a thousand people responded and represented community members throughout the county. In the fall of twenty twenty two, we had a new director join the department, Bennett Knox. Bennett to introduce himself to the community and hear firsthand from citizens. Held a series of town hall meetings throughout the county. Five of them, including Point Roberts, Van Zandt, East Waukesha Regional Resource Center, and Van Van Zandt. We also look to our staff as they have the our frontline folks have day daily interactions with the visiting public, so they hear firsthand about what's working, what's not. They're also experts with their facilities. They know exactly what the condition is, and are integral to updating our plan. This plan also looked at the state SCORP, which is State Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Recreation and Conservation Office updates that plan every five years. They do that so that Washington State is eligible for federal grants. In it, they do a statewide survey. Surveying recreational users. It was had two components, quantitative survey. Asking people, what are the most common recreational events, activities that they engage in, and how often they do it? The second one was a qualitative one where they said, what is your, what's the quality of your experience as you do, as you do recreating outdoors? That was important to identify people's motivation and perhaps barriers that they experienced to stop them from recreating outside. So the slide sixteen. So with an inventory and the demand and need analysis, we identify. The need for additional facilities. At the top of the list is water access, which has been consistent with updates of the plan. People want access to the shoreline of both fresh and saltwater. Some of our facilities, there's a strong indication from public that they'd like to see improved restroom facilities as well as parking. I think that relates to a couple of things with, especially with the parking, then they go hand in hand. Most of our facilities are trailheads. And they have a vault toilet and a gravel parking lot, and I think people are seeing the need to upgrade those to flush toilets and perhaps pay parking lots that can better address stormwater. In the save our demographics, we see that Waukesha County's population is changing. It's not only getting bigger, but it's getting older and it's diversifying. And what people are indicating to the department through the survey is that they want to have facilities that age with them. As their abilities get cut, get reduced, or or they can't do all the activities they used to, they want to still have facilities that are accessible to folks of all levels. Additionally, protection of the natural environment, especially water quality, is very important to the community. We go to slide seventeen. Let's reveal all the texts, thank you. So the goals and objectives first looks at the large overarching. Growth Management Act goals relates those as they relate to our parks and recreation facilities. It also reviews Waukesha County Comprehensive Plans, various chapters that include goals and policies related to our, to our Parks and Recreation Department. And from that, the CPROS plans identifies perhaps more detailed, granular, and actionable goals and objectives that we can actually implement. Within our system as well as specific parks. Those goals and objectives are organized in ten categories. The first of which are our facility types. We have, we have an open space, natural areas, we may have all the way down to specially used facilities like the Phillips sixty six. We also address programming objectives. Waukesha County, the department no longer actively. Provides recreational program. We rely on partnerships with other entities to do that. The final three are related to administration of the department in terms of design standards. Being fiscally responsible and then taking care of those staffs that actually can run the department. Go to slide eighteen. The recommendations that come out of the plan are in two categories, system wide. So it's things that 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 can be applicable to all of our facilities. And then site specific objectives or initiatives that will be at the specific facilities. Those are then captured in a capital improvement plan, specific discrete projects that are scheduled over a six year period with a preliminary budget assigned to them. The plan concludes with existing and potential funding sources that will allow us to complete those projects that are listed in that CIP. It's not only just dollars, but it's strategic partnerships with. Community organization, recreational groups, volunteers, and the like. We go to the next slide. On the system wide recommendations. Our our facilities. The plan recommends focusing on our existing facilities, parks and trails, making sure those are taken up, taken care of before we add any more new ones. Again, loud and clear, we need to provide more and better restrooms throughout our system. A new one that came in very clear as well is creating community connections. Making connections from our facilities to individual communities, but then also connections to other recreational facilities, to the use of multimodal trails. So people have an option besides getting in their car to get to our facilities, they can, they can do it by foot or by bicycle. As I mentioned before, accessibility, they want to have a range of recreational facilities that are accessible to people of all ability levels. And of course, improve water access. On the right side of your screen, you'll see specific, some of the specific recommendations the plans include. Because of the positive feedback that we're receiving from the initiatives, we're doing it Silver Lake Park, continuing that effort. We're going to wrap up a couple additional shower and restroom facilities that are replacing vault toilets that were there before. We'll probably conclude that effort with some modest improvements at Cedar Camp, which is sort of our car camping facility. At the Bellingham Senior Activity Center, we're going to begin an initiative where we replace the heating and ventilation system at that particular facility. Currently is heated, but it's not a cooled facility. As we experienced the impacts of climate change, our summers are getting hotter, and many cases smoke here. And so it's important that that vulnerable population be protected. It can also serve as a community cooling area with when it's conditioned space. Well, Lake Waukesha Trailhead, that's another important initiative that this plan recommends. If you've ever been to Lake Waukesha Park on a hot August day, the parking lot is well beyond capacity and people walk for parking on North Shore. That's not safe for the users and it's not safe for other vehicles, so we'd like to expand that facility and also add flush toilets. There was a pretty significant damage to the forest road system at Lookout Mountain Forest Reserve. When we took stewardship of those national resource properties, we also took responsibility to maintain the forest roads to forest practice standards. Which we'll be doing at Lookout Mountain. Finally, Birch Bay Beach Park is recommendation for at least the phase one improvements, which are the off street parking and the public restroom facility. So it's like nineteen. This slide shows our existing and potential funding sources. The left hand side, the top two are real estate excise tax. We use both REIT one and REIT two, which is the first quarter percent, the second quarter percent of of a price of a of a real estate transaction. REIT one is a bit more flexible, REIT two is is more constrained, what we can actually use it for. We also use conservation futures, which is a property tax that allows us to purchase or acquire property. Also allows us to maintain the properties that we use, use those funds to acquire. I tried to get a straight answer on special revenue funds today, and it was sold as it's composed of multiple sources and multiple revenue streams that went into it. I knew of, one of them was a grant reimbursement. We, the county used some conservation futures to acquire Lily Point, and the state reimbursed us for that purchase, that went into the special revenue fund. I mentioned the Nesset Foundation, it's a private endowment that provides our funding for specifically for the Nesset Farm and rehabilitation of the infrastructure there. We partner with Waukesha Parks and Recreation Foundation, it's a nonprofit. When those folk, when a private individual wants to donate to Waukesha County Parks, they can use them as a vehicle. That foundation holds the money for the Parks Department till we're ready to make those improvements. The right hand side of the screen are the various grant funding that is available to us. Recreation Conservation Office is our primary agency that we look to funding, grant opportunities. As they're a clearinghouse for state and federal grant opportunities, but there are also individual opportunities with natural resources, ecology, and fish and wildlife. And also, it's not listed there, but Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation also has grant programs. FHWA or Federal Highways has grants for multimodal transportation, US Forest Service, National Park Service, all have different grant programs. Finally, the other funding sources FEMA is an interesting one. We use it quite a bit at Hovandery, if you can imagine. Quite a bit at Holvanery, if you can imagine. We'll get a flood damage to the park, we, we don't wait for FEMA to reimburse us, right? We go out there and fix whatever needs to be fixed. So that we can open the park back up to the public. We keep track of all those dollars and they're eligible for reimbursement. So we, we recoup the expense that the county did incurred by rehabilitating that facility. Those funds are then earmarked, go back into that facility. We also leverage lodging and a hotel tax. Primarily at our facilities that support tourism. The restroom at Glacier is a good example of that, a lot of people transit through the area and stop there for a pit stop. Lastly, and perhaps. Importantly. Is the general fund, the general fund funds our day to day operations and staff and the ordinary maintenance. So the next slide. So next steps. Our next steps are. To request that the planning commission take a recommendation of approval of this plan to the Waukesha County Council. At a department level guidance document. Should you do that, we would schedule a hearing with Waukesha County Council. To, to, to present this plan and should they want to, they can adopt it at a following meeting. Once the plan is adopted, we'll make a submittal, submittal to the Recreation Conservation Office for certification. And that I anticipate being in mid, mid February. The certification shouldn't take too long, they've already seen it and have preliminary approved it. That would make us eligible for grant funding opportunities. In twenty twenty four, in which the deadline is coincidentally March first. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy, thank you for your time and putting me on the agenda, I really appreciate it. I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan, the process of. Updating the plan or department or anything else. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Lucas? Commissioner Hanson.
Well, thank you and thank you for the presentation, sir. I have a couple of, couple, three or four inquiries on this. First of all. Really, this relates to both Nesset's farm and the Galbraith Farm Park. I'm into, we're talking about spending money on. On preserving the property on Nesset's farm and I'm wondering. What's the story about actually providing public access to that? That park, as I understand. Has been blocked by an adjacent landowner. Then shortly after we. Obtained that park. And one of the, one of the plans was to make a trail. From the Galbraith Farm Park. Through the uplands and loop around into the, into the property, so could you tell me what the status is about? Totally about Galbraith Farm. Park, and I don't know what you're calling it actually, but it's the old Galbraith property. On the left bank of Nook's Act, just over the bridge, what's happening with that park, what's happening with access to Nesset's Farm?
Yes, thank you for the question. The whole complex, we refer to now as, you're right, the component parts are Galbraith Farm, Overby Farm and Nesset. We refer to the whole complex as South Fork Park. And you're right also in that there was initially, when we were first acquiring those properties. There was sort of a tentative agreement with two private landowners that we would use sort of a river route. From Galbraith Farm to Overby Farm and then from Overby Farm to Nesset. If you, if you're familiar with the shape. Of, of the park, Galbraith is the northern property, Overby's the middle and Nesset is at the very southern end. That, that particular property owner, one of them decided that they did not want to grant an easement. And that forced the department to look at going around those properties. The department actually has an agreed trail, recreational trail easement with Department of Natural Resources. However, when we routed it with, with the, through. Department of Natural Resources property to get to Overby. It came in proximity to Hutchinson Creek. In reaching out to our tribal neighbors, they had concerns about routing recreation that close to. An area that they consider very sensitive. And so we were working on a solution to an equitable, equitable solution that would allow access while protecting their. Cultural sensitivity of sites. We're still working on that, I think a trail will ultimately. Be constructed. However, in the meantime, just happening this year. The county acquired a, a property to the south that's off Saxon Road. And that will provide the initial access to Nesset Farm. You might have heard of it, it's, it's been, it's just. If it's not closed yet, the property will close in the next week or so, I think it's already closed. But that property is called the Crossco Property. And it's, it's a nice level site where we can have a proper trailhead. And, and our existing easement that we have with the Department of Natural Resources will get us to the Nesset Farm.
Excellent, than- thank you for that. So just to clarify, since I know this property pretty well. You can cross Hutchinson Creek near its mouth on park property, but then you have. Then then the property boundary is somewhat constrained, it's going. Going east to get up into the, up around that way, is that the problem?
Yeah, the, the, the boundary near Hutchinson Creek, immediately south of that, on the other side is pri- those are the private properties.
Right, I, and I even know the property owners, but okay, and the other, other que- two question is what is Lake, what about? Lake Waukesha Park, one is, what, what have you done in the budget to improve trailhead security? Since I know that's an issue. And the other question is. What can you do to improve, to increase parking? At the Lake Waukesha Park Trailhead without removing si- significant trees?
Great questions. We have a preliminary design that we have, that will be. Doing some public outreach early to mid next year. To present that plan to the community. And at that time, we'll be able to demonstrate how we've been able to protect the most significant trees, I'm not going to tell you, we can't, we'll protect all of them because we simply can't. But we've done, I think we've done a good job at protecting. Significant older growth and, and mature trees that are in that area. The, the area does have some old road beds in it. And we leverage those to align the, the, the new parking lot or the expanded parking lot within those previously disturbed areas. I can't remember the exact number of trees, but there's nothing over like. Twenty four inches that we're removing, protecting all of those trees. But we'll have more information, we'll, we'll, we'll. Advertise that so that you know ahead of time. In terms of parking lot security, it is a problem there. And part of the problem, I think, is. Where people park, sometimes they don't have the ability to park in the open, I think. Having an expanded parking lot will create a larger open space with. Allowing a little bit more traffic, which provides sort of an eyes on the street, if you will. That sometimes the, some additional, just people using a facility, crime levels will go down. We do have. Dark Sky compliant lighting planned for the facility as well, so that should help with some of the security issues.
Thank you so much.
So I, I want to ask. Is it okay with chair and staff if? We answer more questions after we let the public have a chance to speak and is it because I'm just trying to be respectful of. A few people who may have come who have got very specific comments and might like to get their comments in.
So the question is, are you guys going to? Our staff going to be here after when we get into our discussion?
Yes, yes, we will be.
Then I'll hold my questions till then.
Any other commissioners have questions? We need to have a public hearing. I think we're ready for that and so. Becky will give the instructions to see.
I remind you again that this is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. For those in person, if you would like to provide public comment on this topic, we will take your comments from the room first. Please come up to the podium and print your full name and state it for us and you'll have three minutes. We'll go with the signup sheet. Angela Anderson.
No, you need to start my clock, are we good?
Oh, thank you very much.
So I'll take the extra time.
All right, perfect, hi. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about Waukesha County's recreational needs. I'm also a county employee, so I know how exciting it is when meetings finally get to public comments, so I appreciate your attention here tonight. I want to thank Ron, I'm so sorry I didn't get your last name about your presentation on Waukesha County's needs. I feel very blessed to live in a county that's focusing so much on providing parks for my kids and for the families in Waukesha County. But I want to point out this, while wonderful as this was, what I didn't hear a lot about was indoor recreational facilities. And it may not be the point of the presentation, but I do feel like Waukesha County sort of forgets that it rains here a lot of times. And we maybe need to look at other options for our kids. And so while we focus a lot on outdoor activities, I'd like the. Planning Commission to think about a different option, which would be hockey and an indoor skating rink. So if I can take a moment, my name is Angela Anderson, I'm the Vice President of Wakaha, which is Waukesha County Amateur Hockey Association. And I'm always shocked by how many people I meet that go, what, we have a hockey rink in Waukesha County? Well, we do. And. We, well, first I want to tell you our mission statement. Waukesha's mission statement is to develop and encourage the sport of youth hockey in Waukesha County. With a focus on fun, physical activity and social well being to teach sportsmanship through wholesome competition. Our vision is to provide youth hockey experience for players of all skills, levels and ages that will help them develop as players and individuals. And foster a lifelong enjoyment of the game of hockey. You guys need to know that we have over two hundred and twenty young people playing hockey, this is grown from seventy five kids nine years ago. We have approximately seven hundred spectators every weekend at the Sportsplex. I did an informal poll this last weekend, our Saturday games, we had back to back games. This is bringing international draw, we probably had a thousand people on just the hockey side alone. That's not including the soccer side of the Sportsplex. Youth hockey is growing at four percent rate in Washington State. Our hockey association is not just made up of Waukesha County families, but we draw from Skagit and Island. But we draw from all over Waukesha County, a huge percentage of our kids are from Ferndale, Linden, Maple Falls and Blaine. They're driving, they're bragging all the way to Bellingham to play hockey. We have a bunch of activities where we're bringing in spectators from Kings, Snohomish, Lower Bainland, DC. We have hockey tournaments where people are spending money, staying overnight, contributing to your tourism tax. And it's not coming back to helping us out. We have a hundred new families each year trying hockey for free. We have fifty kids in our learn to play and right now we have twenty kids, we can't even have play because we don't have ice time for them.
Catherine Boswell?
Yep, my name's Catherine Boswell, I'm just going to follow up from Angela, I am on board of Waukesha Hockey. I've been with Waukesha Hockey for fourteen years, I've had two boys, one still playing, one has hung up the skate, so to speak, and he went off to college. But what we want to echo, or what I want to echo is that. What we desire is not just a hockey rink, but an indoor recreational facility. So we are coming from the hockey community, but that hockey rink can serve the public through public skate, to learn to skate. Western Washington University has a hockey team that needs a place to skate. The Blazers Hockey Program needs a place to skate. Gosh, there are so many people that use that ice and we're, we have clearly hit our breaking point that we don't have enough ice. To convey that point. My eleven year old son, as well as Angeles, has a six AM hockey practice tomorrow morning. That's when our kids practice is before school at six AM in order to get enough ice time. So what we want to just put the idea out there that recreation is not just outdoor, but it's indoor. And north of the border, we have great examples of recreational facilities that are combined hockey rinks and swimming pools. With meeting space, fitness centers, an entire recreational facility that serves the public. And not everybody can afford a ninety dollar Mount Baker. Lift ticket, not everybody can afford a three thousand dollar mountain bike. But a lot of people can afford a drop in the, for a swimming pool, a public skate. You know, a use of a gym and we just want to be one user group that is putting out there this idea that indoor rec is needed. And wanted in, in Waukesha County and would serve so many people in this county. And I just want to echo this awesome, the, the idea that. It can be a tourism, a source of tourism dollars. This year, myself and a few other people, we organized the first ever hockey tournament for Waukesha County, we had eight teams come from Washington, Oregon and British Columbia for the weekend. It represented a hundred and fifty hotel room booking nights. And they came for the weekend with their families and these kids played hockey and those people spent money here. And we would do that five, six, seven times a winter, but we don't have the ice to do it. We got really lucky that we were able to carve out one weekend of ice in March of this year, we're going to try and do it next year. But we have people asking us over and over again, could you host another hockey tournament over winter break? Could you host a hockey tournament, Veterans Weekend? We can't because we don't have enough ice, so anyways, our ask is just that there be consideration to indoor recreation. Recreational facilities, and I also want to echo, I am so grateful for our outdoor rec, I use it every day. I, I, I walk our trails and I mountain bike, but there's also this opportunity to get some indoor facilities, so thank you for listening to us.
Dave Woodner. And anyone else in the room wish to speak? And can you state your name, please?
Amy Cully.
Oh, you have the list. What, how do you spell your last name?
C U L O Y. Thank you. As you can tell from my emblem here, I'm also geared for supporting Kaha and a push for indoor recreation. This gal here, she is also one that will be up and skating at six AM tomorrow morning. The boy here, this is Rayland, he also states. Yeah, I would like to kind of echo. What has been said here, the mention of Western's team. Western has been trying to put together a female hockey team. And we don't have ice time. My daughter is the only female on her. Separate team, we have many females in our program. But we don't have an opportunity for her to see her own colleagues. We have pushed out the female hockey team, they have gone south. Because you don't have enough ice time. We simply are at capacity for what we are providing for our kids. The other challenge, because we are so pressed for our ice time is. Hockey is a full commit sport, we are, you can either do a half season when you're at the younger ages. But when you get to the older ages, even in the next age bracket from Adelaide sitting here. You are a six month commitment, that is because that's what we have ice time for. So if we want to give kids an opportunity to try out hockey. We have Try Hockey Free that is supported by USA Hockey, it's a great opportunity, kids show up, they get. Full gear, top to bottom, Adelaide has helped out with many of those try hockey events. That, that's it, we don't have any smaller chunks. Kind of seasons or ability for people to just try hockey for a season, you are committed. If you, that, that's your only option, is go big or go home. And we love it, we live it. But to give kids an opportunity to have, to try out hockey, to just have some fun and get those skills. On the ice, we don't have that opportunity for our community. to just have some fun and get those skills uh on the ice, we don't have that opportunity for our community.
Thank you for your time. I didn't even get my thirty seconds.
Thirty-three seconds.
Anyways, thank you for your time.
I need to say.
You can just state your name.
Brad Kilber. And uh, awesome job. Everything you said, and it's not just the ice side. Uh, it's not just ice, it's figure skating. I've been in the sportsplex every night for the last three weeks just looking around. It's speed skating, it's figure skating, it's not hockey. And just like the ice side, there is an equivalent wonderful youth through, as you mentioned, the aging. So you go on the turf side and there's kids from six to eighty-six because we need this indoor space and, and you know, whatever. Um, so it's really wonderful what we have on the inside. You have Western, you have the, you have the, on the, you heard a lot about the, the ice side. So on the, on the turf side, you have lacrosse going on, you've got ultimate prison, you've got six-year-olds all the way to eighty-six-year-olds and they're, they're all playing. And their families are there and they, and they have times where the parents or grandparents are playing with the six-year-olds. And it's really spectacular. And I would just like to say, we need to consider that both sides, turf and ice, are out of space and it's a, the location is spectacular right by the freeway. It's a marvelous opportunity for the city and the county to develop a complex that would be like a diamond in not only the west coast, but perhaps the country. So let's really think about that. And I would say, let me see what else I have to say here. Um. You know, it's not just that. There's party uses, there's corporate events, there's, they've got this thing, what's it called, where they do the keg? And they roll the keg out in the ice.
Keg curling.
Keg curling. So corporate events, they do keg curling there. You get kegs and you try to do curling. And so there's just a lot of fun things there. Um, let's see. I've got a minute and nine seconds. Does anybody have any questions about the sportsplex? Yes, sir.
What other locations have you guys thought about?
It's an interesting question. Um, for, for what specifically?
For building.
Um, there we go.
The court has said they, some old airplane, uh, like airport space we could have, but we don't have the money to build another rink, but they would be willing to uh cooperate with us. I'd love to see it off of I-5, like Ferndale area, so it's easy access for people coming from Canada. Sorry, I'm poaching.
No, 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 I wanted that. Now, there used to be an ice, a rink somewhere out by the airport. I don't remember where that was or if that's still an option. But to build another ice facility or turf side, it's just very expensive. Uh, but like you said, there's lots of tournaments both at the park here where people come from all over the state to play. They play indoor soccer, they play the hockey team. So it's a wonderful facility. Thank you very much.
I'm here to burst some people's bubble. Rosemary Van Beek. I got my tax bill. And I'm just concerned with all the cost of everything. Want to make sure that we keep our costs in line. I noticed we have uh sixty-one parks. And I ran off all the budgets everywhere. And a blind item, everyone. Of course, I've looked at trails, you've got seventy-five miles of trails, I think. Last county council meeting, they talked about expanding trails and doing all this. That's great. I love it. Wonderful. But at some point, us taxpayers have got to foot the bills. And it's getting a little extravagant. I was really shocked at what the taxes were on my property when I came here, and every year they have escalated. So just a thought, when y'all do this, try and find your grants, try and find all that. But us taxpayers are beginning to have enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak? And seeing none online in this session?
Commissioner Desmonte, did you have a question for one of the speaker?
Well, it's, it's now follow-up to the hearing. Is the hearing closed?
No, we're just about, uh, just about ready that.
I'll wait then.
So we'll put you on hold there for a minute. So the public hearing is closed. And, yeah, uh, commissioner, it's time for discussion. So Commissioner Desmonte, go ahead.
So two-part question. Uh, the first is, has Waukesha County ever considered this kind of recreational, indoor recreational facilities? Of course, it's currently falls under the city of Bellingham. Um, has it ever been a focus of Waukesha County? And um, if it has, could you explain that? And then the second part of the question is, could the staff um allow us to do a keg curling event for the planning commission?
Uh, I'll take that and maybe with, and ask for some assistance with Lucas. He and I talked earlier. We reviewed the county's comprehensive plan for specific mention of an indoor facility, and we found one. Um, it's, it's fairly vague about, uh, it's, it's related to aquatic facilities. Um, it, it, it's kind of a, a, a statement of look for opportunities for partnerships. Uh, keeping in mind that the county is, will not be a main provider of aquatic facilities. Is that accurate, Lucas?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I, I don't know about past history as far as what the county has, or Parks Department has looked at for indoor facilities. Um, policy nine G uh is continuing to monitor the need for an additional aquatic facility in the community with the basic assumption that Waukesha County will not be an indoor aquatic provider in the near future. And that's in chapter uh nine of the Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan.
And I, I'm not aware of any plans to, to facilitate that, that type of facility. There are some other mentions in the, the CPROS plan about looking for opportunities to partner. But I think it's under the same, the assumption or understanding that um it would require a partnership. Uh, the county wouldn't, wouldn't be in a position to do it alone. Our uh county recreational facilities have always, um, ever since I've been involved with the department, which is starting about two thousand and eight, have focused on regional facilities um and that, that cater to um passive recreation, trail-based recreation and are not related to, um, or not, don't really address indoor facilities. Uh, I'm not saying I agree with that or disagree. It's just that, that's the, that's the direction that the department has been given about services we've been providing that we provide. It's also reinforced when, when we do surveys about what people um are looking for and use most. Um, however, I will point out that in our last online survey, there was quite a bit of feedback about skating and, and, and hockey. And this was prior to, you know, the Kraken and, and, and they were sort of foretelling that this will be an increased use. So that is documented in our CPROS and the appendices. We've included all those public comments, so the uh county leadership um, we'll, we'll see those comments.
I'll, I'll ask you a question then. Um, so. Is there anything at all about future directions or anything like that that talks about other facilities? Um, I've, of course, been up here at the Northwest Soccer Park many, many times and been up with teams and things like that. The hockey resonated with me a little bit because TJO, she went to school with my son.
There you go.
You know, his uncle came around. We have a piece of property down and, and we're looking at doing some building on it. He gave me one of the bits. And then, um, the first, one of the first soccer teams that I coached, one of the players, um, and I can't remember her last name now, but her brother was a major league hockey player and he paid for uniforms for the team. So I've kind of had this in the back of my mind, but, but I'm thinking what some are saying, that part of recreation is having things that aren't outdoors. And is there a thing where someone would consider that our long-term goal, we need to add an indoor facility, Waukesha County Park?
Uh, it's, it's not a current recommendation in the, in the current CPROS plan of, of pursuing that. Other than in the, in the same way that the county comprehensive plan, it says if there are opportunities to partner with another organization, because at this point, the department of county would have to partner, but there's just not, um, we're not set, the department's not set up to manage that type of facility. In fact, with Philip sixty-six Soccer Park here, we rely on um, the Waukesha Sports and Recreation Group to manage that facility. Um, when my kid was going there, there was a Waukesha Northwest Soccer Association that managed that on behalf of the department. So they have control and responsibility of maintaining that facility. And we actually are pretty hands-off with it.
And, and, and I understand that. And, and what I'm kind of thinking of is that one, that it wasn't a park project, but it is a Waukesha County Park and that we have the Birch Bay Burn Project. And that started about twenty years ago or more, where it just was this dream that started getting added into the Waukesha County documents that this would be a good thing to do. And it took about fifteen or more years. But is it possible to have some language that parks will consider somewhere in the future that?
I, I think the plan can acknowledge an increased demand for that type of facility. Um, I'm not sure it, it's the perfect place at this time to actually recommend exploring those options, but I think we need to recognize the desire to have them. Uh, I, I think it would take a lot more feasibility studies or analysis to figure how that, how that type of facility um could be constructed and what kind of strategic partnerships. I think the city of Bellingham is a good target. It's, it's encouraging here for Bellingham. Um, I wasn't aware of that. Uh, we're becoming a bit more collaborative with the Port of Bellingham recently and the city of Bellingham. So that, so I think if there's an opportunity there to explore some of these strategic partnerships, see what can happen.
Well, you know, with, if I interrupt you, I didn't mean to. And that was, you made a comment about, you know, looking forward and just a comment that somewhere in the future, we may be looking at. You know, it might be a time of value to have something like that. Not a commitment to do it, but that it's on there.
I, I think, I think we can make that modification to the body of the text of the current draft CPROS before it goes to council to acknowledge what we've heard here. It's consistent with, with the um the ser, online survey that we received, and I think we can just highlight that so it becomes evident. And in full transparency, the, the uh Philip sixty-six is actually in the inventory of parks and recreation. So that's one of the seventy-three properties that we're steward of. We just rely on, on that partner to operate it. However, the burn project is clearly public works.
Yeah.
And, and you're absolutely right. I, I, I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek.
So I'm gonna say this just because kind of not really on record, but there are a bunch of road and parks that are part of the Waukesha County Park system. And I was trying to figure out how come some of them are are actual roads out to the beach and some of them are parks. And it turns out that, that Waukesha County Roads own some of those. And Park Department would have to buy it from, um, from Public Works. And even if that, sometimes it might have to go out the bed and somebody else may buy it. So you will see all these parks and the parks. Some of them belong to, um, to Public Works. It's free and some of them belong to the Park Department. So, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's exactly right. We do have several waterfront access points along Birch Bay that are, that are in the responsibility of the Parks Department. Alderson Road is, is not one of those. It's, um, there's a restroom facility there in Engle, Texas. That is, that is still public right of way. However, we are exploring in partnership with Public Works to have that land transferred. You're absolutely right. The road fund needs to be made whole. Um, if they, if that property is, is transferred over to the, the suite of properties for the Parks Department, the road fund needs to be compensated for the value of that property.
Right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hampton, go ahead.
Didn't Commissioner Desmonte, uh, get his hand up there first?
Please go first.
Okay, mine is quick. Uh, my wife who's on uh, uh, City Parks and Recreation here in Bellingham made an interesting suggestion, which might fit in well with a partnership between, say, the city of Bellingham, Waukesha County, YMCA, they're coming up with, uh, they want, looking for a community center. And uh, and they mostly need land to make it happen. And idea she had is if we put a new pool adjacent to the ice skating rink, could use a heat exchanger and help, help keep the ice frozen in the pool heated with the same energy. That's it.
Commissioner Desmonte?
Okay, so um, I'm going back to the public comments. Um. By the way, I, I was able to access them not through the email that I was sent, but by going to the website for the planning commission, just sharing that. I know we're working out the bugs on communication to the commission. We just wanted to share that. And um, when I, I'll, uh, review the comments, uh, there was another topic that I, I think I want to uh raise now, uh, that had quite a few comments that I don't know if staff has considered. And that is the subject of Disc Golf. Um, and then I've got one other item that came up too that I, I found and I wanted, but I wanted to see if staff could address Disc Golf.
Yes, um, we've had some discussions with, uh, I can't recall the Disc Golf group name. Um, at one point years ago, there was talk about looking at what are the right types of facilities that we have in our inventory that would be uh compatible with that use. Uh, two of them, perhaps three of them rose to the surface. They include Hovander, Birch Bay, I'm sorry, Bay Horizon Park and Silver Lake Park. Um, we don't have a formal proposal from a user group, which is what would be required to initiate that. Um, the user group would have to propose, propose to use that a location um for the Park Department to respond to. Um, it's, it's simply a matter of, um, we're, we're current, we're, we're serving the majority of our users, which is passive recreation um on trails and then our existing facilities of picnic day use. I'm not saying it's not possible. We just need to look at it as a specific proposal to evaluate or compatibility with, with the existing facility.
And you've let the uh people who submitted comment as well as their associated groups know that they can, that's the best way for them to take the next step?
Yes, I, we, we had specific conversations. It's been now, um, probably five, six years that, that they have, um, they responded, I was direct, in direct communication with one group. Um, but I'll say again that those comments were also captured. There were a few frisbee golf comments captured in the online survey, and those were part of the appendices. Um, it's a relatively small number compared to the old, the overall responses, but they are in there.
And so these newer responses that are repeating the same point, how would they know that that prior discussion has occurred? And that that's their best recourse?
At the time I was doing the one group, that was, that was the, the, the notion was that they would provide an actual proposal. I don't recall receiving that proposal or in its final form where we could respond to it.
Hmm. Yeah, well, I'm just suggesting that, um, it'd be, um, because if folks submit a comment and, and they might feel frustrated uh in that maybe some way, there may be some way for staff to respond to the commenters about the history so that they know how to direct your energy.
Uh, your point is well taken. Um, one thing I didn't indicate is, um, this, this plan, we're planning, because this update occurred during the pandemic when we had some lockdown restrictions, our ability to be completely responsive to the public was somewhat limited. Um, however, the need to get this plan updated is, is, is imperative. Bennett Knox, Parks Director, um, has Um, Bennett Knox, Parks Director, um, has committed to updating this plan. On an expedited um schedule long before um the next grant, the the when before it's due, which would be typically six years. We're planning a process where we update this plan ahead of that schedule and it'll begin in twenty twenty five.
Okay. I respect all that. I'm just saying that I don't know how hard it is to get an email out to the people who've responded recently. On Discord to let them know that, you know, that that that's where it was left off and reference them to. An organization or something. It might might be a good way to redirect the energy. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up. Is Lighthouse Park in um Point Roberts. There's a couple of comments about that. And um, can staff address that?
Uh, I'm afraid I didn't get to review all of the comments um before this meeting. Um, so if you can give me a summary of what the what the comment was regarding Lighthouse Marine Park, I'd be happy to respond to it.
Okay, um, I will leave that. Um, now, when it's appropriate, Chair, I've got a. A series of comments about from the agenda packet that we received. As well, that are really about this, you know, the main focus, I think, of what the staff wants feedback on. Um, which is about, you know, what they presented us. But I wanted to deal with the public input on items first.
Well, are there other comments um outside of of Commissioner Desmonte? Sorry, I'm reading a note. We're talking about some of the things that that. Um, the public commented on, so we're trying to listen, but we're also trying to write. Like to put this in a motion. That we um, that this. Parks Packet has added the line, Parks will evaluate. Opportunities for indoor recreation facility, but make that a motion to add this. To the Parks. Evaluate opportunities for indoor recreation facility. So that's a motion.
All second.
So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner, um, Mousary, thank you.
I have a question. Where would something like that go where in? You know, I made the motions on the table, but I don't know where exactly would go in the report. Or where would be an appropriate place for that or how that would sound, a statement like that would fit in.
Um, I would put it in uh the public outreach section of our need and demand analysis or demand and need analysis. Um, that's that's where I would suggest putting that language. That's that's where we summarize the 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 public comment that we received. So I think that's an appropriate spot.
Um, so I have some questions about that. I think it's important that we do try to carry this ball forward. Or we encourage the community to carry this ball forward. On the subject of indoor recreation. The question is, is the is planning and development services the right organization to carry that ball? I'm wondering. And um. And it seems like a cross governmental. Yeah, area of exploration. And it's almost like it might be good for an ad hoc group. That's also working with some of the groups like YMCA. Um. And seeking private donations and funding as well. Um, explore this kind of a recreational facility. And I'm not sure that. Planning and Development Services is that kind of an organization um. Or or well situated to do that. So I I'd like to hear from staff on on the subject of. Of how to move this ball forward in exploring how indoor facilities can be exp- developed.
And Commissioner Desmonte and I'll and I'll. Back and talk, but the intent was for this to go into the Parks and Recreation Document, not in planning. But you'd go in there in this document, and it would be Parks. Uh, responsibility as if we move forward over the next number of years and. And if it's like the burn project, it took about twenty years, but it got there. And so. Um, let's see, someone had their hand up with that, Commissioner Jackson. Go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, um, I I was gonna largely echo what a tool, excuse me, Commissioner Desmonte said um. Uh, I know it's a first, um, but. But there was a lot of talk about these partnerships and and that that the county should be on a lookout for partnerships. And I've heard. Throughout the, you know, since the public comment, just several partnerships out there that that are available, it sounds like. Um, from uh interlocal agreements with the various municipalities to. Western Washington University to the YMCA and 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 other private organizations. And so. I think that um, we, you know, from my perspective, the county should be on notice at this point that there are partnerships seemingly out there. Uh, to begin doing this.
Any other comments on the motion? Um, the motion is. For Parks to add. In in their um. Open space um comprehensive parks, recreation, open space plan to add a line. Parks will evaluate opportunities for indoor recreation facility. Becky, would you call the wolf, please?
Dan Daleen.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Desh Vani.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Mosari.
Yes.
Commissioners, um, any other comments on the on the park plan? Commissioner Desmonte, yes, you did have a list you said. Go ahead, Commissioner Desmonte. Uh, unmuted, there we are.
I do have a list and if I've dog ears the pages and I'll just list them and then maybe they can be addressed. Um, please, the staff, please free to interrupt me. Um, if you want to respond to the. Um. Uh, items as I I raised them. Uh, the first thing is on the plantation rifle range. And uh, what is the plant? Uh, you know, I mean, obviously in Wacom County. Like the rest of the country, um. We have the ability for people to have arms, and I feel like it's a public safety need. To let people have a safe place to practice use of their firearms. So. Um, from my understanding that we don't have that provided by the county private landowners who. Who have the space can do so, but um. There's no public facility from my understanding. So. Um. What's your thoughts on that? And what's the urgency of getting a public facility available?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question. Plantation rifle range and indoor range is a Wacom County Recreation Facility. It's completely public. Um, we're the we're the managers of that facility.
I thought it was closed. Is it still open? People cancel practice there?
Not currently, uh, because it's undergoing a series of of projects. One of those is replacing the ventilation system in the indoor range. We've been working on that for a while. Um, it it what happened was we we began that project uh just about the time. Uh, supply chain slowed down, that slowed the project down. Um, with uh a contractor on that to get that project jumpstarted so we can complete the indoor range. Um, I I'm not the subject matter expert on this. Chris Thompson, our operations manager, is leading an effort. To address um some other issues that are at the the plantation rifle range. Those include um uh can um. Hazardous materials of concern. We're working with the Department of Ecology to address some lead contamination. And we're doing a site characterization to understand where the the limits of. The lead contamination exists and other hazardous materials. Um, and we're working with Department of Ecology now to come come up with a cleanup plan. To to mi- uh mitigate that situation. That will keep those outdoor rifle facilities or outdoor shooting facilities um closed. Um, for at least a a year or so.
Yeah, and I think that's been delayed quite a bit. I just wanted to point it out. And and I've heard from the community that that's a real concern.
It it's a it's a concern that's shared by the department and we're we're working diligently to try to get that, at least the indoor range. Uh, completed that ventilation ventilation system completed so that we can reopen that to the public.
Okay, my next question is about the determine, under the findings of fact on page three, section six. It's item two says a determination of non-significance was issued under under CFA. And, you know, of course, this is, this is boilerplate almost, right, for anything the planning commission looks at. But I'd like to consider whether really, do we really know? That does it uh appropriate to say that this uh determination of non-significance for. I mean, there's critical clearly impacts of what's being discussed and being proposed. Uh, having an impact on critical areas. So, um. I'm just wondering, I know what staff thinks on this, because you wouldn't have put that in the findings effect if you didn't agree that there was a determination as nonsense, but. I'm sorry, I'm a little skeptical um on that determination. Um, and feel free to respond.
Commissioner Desmonte, um, maybe it makes sense to, I I. At some point to sit down and talk maybe through how it sounds CFA works. Um, and what that means. Um, I'm happy to do that at some point. Um. I I think that's probably the best answer.
Um, yeah, well, yeah, I understood it was he was, but you know what happens is that. That can be pushed back. It's not uncommon for people to make the statement that. To challenge the determination of non-significance, right? That's that's not an uncommon thing for people to say. So.
One of the things I think that sometimes gets forgotten is that. And I'm not, I don't want to go too far down this this rabbit hole because it really.
Yes, it's the rabbit hole for sure.
My CFA, and it's actually, I I love the subject oddly, so. It's a simple past uh in in the nineteen nineteen seventies, right? It was the first prime laws that came Washington state had. Um, it predates GMA, which didn't come until the nineties. And so. It so that means it predates our critical areas ordinance and things like that. So part of CFA is that when we have. We're putting in these regulations that address specific things like our critical areas. Um, those regulations then. Address the potential impacts that would occur. So if if something is addressed by a regulation. Then you don't necessarily address in CFA, you consider it addressed. And so.
I get what you're saying. Yeah.
Well, it, when you talk about like uh the impacts on. On the natural resources, many of those are addressed through additional regulations that have been put in place.
True.
At this point in kind of the regulatory scheme is really intended to catch those. Those areas that aren't addressed through existing regulations. So it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so it's important for me to recognize that that finding of fact is. It's determination of non-significance subject to environmental review. Um, for the proposed actions.
Yes, there are still other regulations that will take effect. There will, there may be conditions. And so this for a project like this, it's a non-project action. So that means that. There's project actions to those that are like on the ground kind of construction. So that's a project action and that's evaluated a little bit differently than a non-project action, which is like a plan. So this is non-project action. Those individual projects would then have to go through that that project review. To determine whether there was, you know, if if there was.
Critical areas impacts and so on. Yeah, and I'm and I just wanted to say that I don't know if it makes sense, but maybe there's, it would it would be. Advisable to add that findings in that sentence on that findings of fact save. Um, recognizing that there's uh individual review of project actions under. Under, um, but anyway.
Yeah, sorry, you got me going. You got me going, sorry.
Yeah, um. Related to that is just the 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 whole focus on, um, there's a lot of language on critical habitat. And and I have to admit, it's a big, it was a big packet and I didn't read every word. But I wonder, I saw lots of comments on on habitat, but I didn't see the word, the phrase critical areas. Very much. And I'm wondering, what's this task thinking? On critical area areas related code and how that impacts this Parks and Recreation Plan.
Uh, within the C pros specific goals and objectives, there's a special, there's this dedicated area on preserves and natural areas. That that have specific uh goals. And uh associated objectives to protect habitat and sensitive areas. That's the part of the charge of the department. It's not focused entirely on on um outdoor recreation. Uh, there's also protection of sensitive areas in our suite of. Of facilities, uh, an example of that might be Stimson Family Nature Reserve. Where it's it's a large protected area. Um, we 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 prohibit bicycle use, um, pets, and it's only open to hiking. Um, and that's to protect the the unique and critical areas associated with that facility.
Okay, so I I. My feels feeling here is your answer is that critical areas and critical habitat are. Are basically the same thing from your perspective.
Uh.
So 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 they're not, they're not the same thing, but. They would still be subject, any kind of development that was going to occur, parks would still be subject to the same. Requirement today when else.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just trying to make a suggestion here is that maybe thinking about the fact that um specific language to. Explain the difference between the habitat aspect of critical areas. And other aspects of critical areas might be helpful. Um, in looking at in this um update. I'm not sure it's essential, but I just was noticing that. Because you know, as a planning commission, I spend a lot of time on critical areas ordinance and as you as you well know. So, um, I don't see any problem at this point, but I I'm just noticing that. Um, moving on. Um, there was a issue that came up at at in the community this last summer. Um, uh, was quite controversial at the county council. Um, regarding tubing. And that's leading me to this next comment. I, you know, what is a vehicle by which our community, our our government? That pushes forward ordinance is that impact the community and their recreation. Um, that allows kind of greater understanding. Like parks are a vehicle for engaging with our natural environment, but they're also the best place. To educate. And I don't see much language in this document addressing the education. Of our public. And I think it's a golden opportunity. There's no more teachable moment for a person. About how to protect reds. Reds is the term used for, you know, very young salmon or um. Other aspects of our ecosystem than when they're already out there engaged. With the ecosystem. So I'd like you all on staff to consider. How how are we addressing education? And how can we, because what happened is that in the, if you, any of you listened to the county council during that conversation, there was this. Big outlatches that out uh backlash about. Oh, you're taking away my recreation by eliminating tubing. And these are legitimate um concerns by people in the community. And so one of the ways to avoid or reduce the uh doing a pressure relief on that kind of thing is to increase the amount of education. As part of uh our parking experience. So I just wanted to mention that. So I just wanted to mention that. I think I'm getting close to the end of my. Questions, comments. Yes, and that's, that's, I just have one, one last thing is that when you look at the maps. And you think about. You know, protecting the. Ecosystem function. Um. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. I just feel like. The two Lake Wacom. Assets. That the county now has. And the community forest. Um. That's like ninety, ninety-five percent. Of the footprint. And they're. Now they're all ecologically adjacent to lots of forest land. And natural resources that are extremely valuable to us that we want to keep protected. And so. Um. My question is. Uh. Is it, does it make sense to have a, a more in-depth focus on how you're protecting? Um. Habitat and critical areas in those areas in particular. Like I see a potential corridor is what I'm, I'm seeing. Um. And. You know, people in our community, so many were with us, some were no longer with us as of recently. Have pointed out the importance of corridors and, yeah, continuity in, uh. In critical areas, continuity. In habitat. And I'm wondering if, if you all are thinking about that. That's it.
I can address, um, I think part of that. Uh, the, the forest lands that are adjacent to Lake Wacom, um, Lake Wacom Park and Lookout Mountain. Were acquired for the express purposes to protect water quality. Um, the way we can, the vehicle we can do that is through reconvenance. Which, um, it can only be there for park purposes. So this was a, a recreational plan to, to secure those lands, provide. Um, passive recreation, um, with the idea that the, the forest would be managed to accelerate an old growth condition. Um, to protect the water quality of the lake as well as, um, preserve that sensitive habitat. Uh, we just sent out an RFQ for a forest management plan. It'll be a countywide. A management plan, so how we can, uh, better manage our forests, uh. To protect sensitive habitats and protect water quality. Um, Bennett Knox is in charge of that effort. And, and is, is recently received, um, proposals from various firms that will provide those services to the county.
And maybe, maybe again, uh, Commissioner Desmonte, you go to add also that the. Wildlife Advisory Group is also looking specifically at. Uh, corridors. And so that's on there and then they'll be looking at that later.
Thank you for all your answers. Thanks for entertaining me. Um, now I guess the only other thing left is, uh, the. Comment I made about education. Any thoughts about education?
Hey, uh, commissioners, any more questions? For a motion to adopt this and then, or. Send it on to. Commissioner Desmonte.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to adopt this with that. Uh, a kind of that minor change to findings of fact. Just for the benefit of the public, more than, um, factual correctness, just to make clear that. The proposed actions. Um. Will receive, you know, further review. Under item number two of findings of fact.
Can you clarify that motion a little bit, Commissioner Desmonte?
Sure, it says a determination of non-significance was issued. Under State Environmental Policy Act. No comments. Haven't received. Um, proposed actions would, uh, would receive further. Um. Review according to. Um. State and county.
Think he was mentioning. Protection six, I think that.
Section six, proposed findings of facts and recent fact. Section six, item number two, page three of the packet.
Page three.
Page three, proposed finding of facts. Item two under that.
Commissioner Desmonte, would you, um, must find. A little briefer way to. To state the motion. So I appreciate you got finding a fact then. And, um, we. Want, we've added to it, so we want to send it on. If we want to send it on, we want to send it on with that. And then, you know, the amended parts that we did. And then your comment was about page three and which one was it?
Uh, section six. Item two.
At the, at the staff.
The one that looks like the. And not the big color page one. My bed at the very back, yeah. Page one, two, three, four.
I mean, I'm fine with whatever staff comes up with as far as language to. Just for the purpose of clarification, it could even be a footnote. Steve.
Maybe Commissioner Desmonte, would you, would you? We said something to the effect of it's determination of non-significance was issued. Uh. For a non. For a non-project action. That's normally what we, we term the, it's, it's called an under CIPA, non-project action.
Yeah, that, that's great. That's great.
Yeah, my only comment is. We've had a lot of these, um. I mean, all of them have these proposed finding of facts and when there's a determination of non-significance, that's kind of how it always reads. I don't know, you putting this separate footnote in here doesn't then. Make this seem odd or make it seem like the other ones weren't going to have that same. Follow-up. But this isn't different than how they, they are always written. Now if they should.
For, for sure, but you know, like the other ones are more policy documents. Commissioner Mersari. Um. And what's a little different here is there's all the, there's these specific proposed actions. And capital improvement plans and all that embedded. So I just wanted to differentiate. And I think what. Um, Steve just suggested. Is a. Uh, is a very minor. Modification. Um, it's better than what I was suggesting.
I, I agree with that, but. You see no issue with it. You're, no, it's really, I mean, it's, it's just specifying the, the type, like I say, there, there. Two types of reviews in CIPA, project and non-project. And it just specified.
So, um. We should break this into two rather than making a motion to pass it with some changes.
Um, so. So maybe I'll just propose to, a motion to amend item two of findings of fact. As suggested by Steve. Per my request.
So. A determin- a determination of non-significance.
If you think of a slip warning, so we have to have it in the motion.
Yeah, so I. Yeah, I think. Maybe if you want to. The determination of non-significance was issued for a non-project action. Over the State Environmental Policy Act.
That's my motion. Come on, somebody second it.
I'll second it.
He's still writing it. Okay. So the motions will be. Right after on point two. It'll be right after was issued.
For. So the determination of not, item two will read. So this is page, page three, the staff report. Item. Two. At the bottom of the page. A determination of non-significance was issued. For a non-project action. Under the State Environmental Policy Act. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. No comments have been received to.
Is that the motion, Commissioner Desmonte? Hey, do we have a second? Commissioner Jackson, are, are you good with that motion?
Yeah, I am. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion? Becky, when you call the vote, please.
Dishmonte.
Yes.
Hanson.
Abstain.
Jackson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Mersari.
Abstain.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Barton.
Uh, abstain.
Uh, fails four three.
Motion to that app.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to, uh. This and on to, uh. On to the council. And, uh, the motion should, um. Uh. Mentioned that it's as amended. That we're passing this as amended. Along as you, Commissioner Desmonte, had earlier finding of fact.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I have hard feelings. I'll, I'll get the motion that we approve the, uh. Proposed. Uh, revised. Uh, Parks and Recreation. Listen, plan. Uh, as amended. Including the findings of fact. Which are slightly inferior. But still great.
Do we, do we have a second, Commissioner Jackson? Are you going to second that?
Not this one, no. Yeah, no, I'll second this one.
Is there any discussion? Becky, would you call the roll, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Jefferson.
Yes.
Mersari.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Barton.
Yeah.
Dishmonte.
A, a, a less enthusiastic yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
We have one more piece of business to appoint a representative to the Forest, Forest Resilience Task Force. So.
I can, you should have received a letter and you included on your packet from the, from the. Smoke to the commission, to admission. Um. And I can talk a little bit about that in general if you'd like to. Um, I can read through the purpose that they put into code for the task force, if that's helpful.
Commissioner Desmonte.
I'd like to nominate Jim Hanson for that. Position.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'd like, yes, I'd like to, uh, accept that nomination and point out that I have. Some. Twenty-five years of experience in forestry contracting and restoration forestry.
There any other comments? Any other, um, recommendations? If there is no objection, rather than voting on it, I will just. Say we're in agreement that Commissioner Hanson is going to be the representative to that. Committee.
Yes.
One more, one other thing is my father always said, I learned this in the army, never volunteer. There, I, I think I'll just have to make an exception for this case.
So we have officially appointed Commissioner Hanson as representative to the Forest Resilience Task Force. Okay. Any other business?
I just wanted to mention that I was, uh, before this meeting, I was in the, um, Climate Action. Advisory Committee for the county. And they also appointed somebody for the Forest Resilience. Task force today too. I don't know who it was, but. It sounds like this isn't new and with this, uh, continuity stuff and all the investigation that came up when I asked questions about critical areas, it's a. It's. Hopefully, um, gonna do a lot to improve our community's resilience, which I think is really important. So I'm glad to hear it's happening. Congratulations, Jim.
Hey, there is no other business. The meeting is adjourned.
You all. Very quickly, we will provide your name to the council. And they will be contacting you.
Uh, yeah, I guess I don't have to fill out an online form then. Okay, good. Thanks. I just noticed something else is, I don't know if I'm a. Hello, does anybody know if I'm? Have I officially been reappointed for another term?